Okay, it's 7:00. Before I call the meeting to order, I need to read my script that explains why we are meeting remotely and what we are doing this evening. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Thursday, June 18, 2020. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guonce, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Everybody else? Just pause.
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
I can hear you.
Sounds great. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. The main purpose of this meeting is the public hearing on the FY 2021 budget. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me. Due to reduce background noise and feedback, please wait until the person speaking has finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. I think that we do have to vote on a few things this evening. Rule 22, "All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept through their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law." No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councilors of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and vote thereon. However, if the council may by a majority vote order any matter pending before subcommittees to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be with forth returned to full counsel. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. We do have a public hearing, so I want to read the meeting ground rules for public hearings. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. At the beginning of the meeting, after we call the public hearing to order, I'll ask if there are any members in the public on board that would like to speak. I'll ask for your name and your address, and then, once I have everybody collected, we will go to our speakers for people to ask questions or make comments. At the beginning of our public hearing, I will ask me, Kayale, to speak briefly, as well as Finance Director Brian Ailes. That was mouthful. Thank you for your patience. So now, at 7:05. Ms. Kent, if you're ready, call to order the special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Thursday, June 18, 2020. Could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Yes.
Yeah, Felton?
Yes.
Lardy?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Greetings?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Ian Guonce?
And I am here also. Council Housman, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Housman. And we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:00. We're a little behind, but Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Um, yes. Seems like a sign of the order. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I'm going to call to order this public hearing for Mayor Kayale's FY 21 budget. It's been advertised in the paper in plenty of time, so our public hearing is commencing. And I would first like to go to our Honorable Mayor Michael Kayale. Your Honor?
Thank you.
President, it's good to see everybody. Appreciate a couple minutes now to just kind of give you a bit of a recap of the proposal, and then I'll ask Mr. Ailes to touch on some things as well. First, I do want to say that, you know, we've been all grappling with and trying to deliver critical services for the last three months during the pandemic. It's been just over three months since everything started shutting down very quickly, and we've been working with this. And I want to thank every single school and city employee and department head right through the ranks. People have been doing fantastic work to help our community. And there are certain departments that have done a lot of really public interacting, public facing and public interacting work. And I want to particularly thank our first responders, the ambulance company we contract with, our own buyer and police departments have all done incredible work during this time, as have our small staff, but really incredibly talented and hardworking health department and rec department. They've all done great, great work to help our community make their way through this to date. As far as budget, I want to thank Mr. Ailes. We all know that our Finance Director Brian Ailes is both talented and incredibly hardworking. He also is a person of high ethics through and through, and he's done great work for us, both every day since this pandemic started and in trying to make sure that we quickly, as soon as we saw the warning, that we very quickly really kind of ground to a halt any spending that wasn't entirely necessary, that wasn't 100% critical to city functions over the last three and a half months of the year. As a result, we've been able to ensure some pretty strong turnbacks of money that, you know, that would have been likely spent that now won't be, and that'll help us in our reserve position going forward, to help the community through the next handful of years. And also, Mr. Ailes and the many department heads and their teams who've worked incredibly well together in good faith to really rein in their own budgets for FY 21. As you all know, it was the third year of a three-year contract with all of our city unions, and there were some collectively bargained obligations that were bargained in a good time. And in order to be able to meet those obligations, you know, now that the pandemic's hit, we had to really tighten the belt on a lot of other lines throughout the city budget, and we've done that well. I'm very proud of our team for that. And the great thing with all this is with a city budget, city and school combined, that all told will only grow 1.16%, we are going to be able to provide a really a level service budget, the service that people are used to. Right now, we're going to be able to sustain that. We dip into our reserves to a certain extent, but we believe in a really responsible way, a way that doesn't overly stress those reserves right now, knowing we'll need them next year and the year after, and likely the year after as well. And we're able to do that, keeping the staffing levels where they are, where they need to be, and make sure that we can deliver those services, because as we all know, services are delivered by employees, and the services people need and count on are important in every facet of our community's life. I also want to touch on our police department, given that there's been, you know, rightly a lot of attention being paid to policing and public safety in communities all over the country right now, and we're part of that conversation locally as well. Our police department, as you folks know, is not, it's a budget that is not at all bloated. It's a budget that doesn't have a lot of areas to look to. It's a budget that really needs our support. And I will tell you that we have a community impact unit that's two officers strong, that we always have envisioned having three officers, but at present, there are two. They do a lot of great work, you know, really specifically focused work in the community. We also have our mental health counselor, which is a position that is officially a Beverly Hospital employee, that we secured with some other communities as part of a grant opportunity, and that mental health counselor is an incredible asset to our department. And that mental health counselor goes on a lot of calls and does a lot of follow-up with people in the community. We also have a similarly grant-funded position in our domestic violence unit. So we have, you know, we have the mental health and the social service experts who work with our police department in a lot of really critical components and interacting with people in the community who need that. So I think in a lot of ways, you know, we're meeting a lot of the goals that I think we have for that community focus in our police department. We have a, excuse me, we have a training budget that we, together, those of you who've been doing this alongside me, going on seven years now, and some of you longer and some of you more recently, but we, together, have taken the police department's training budget from a line item of $85,000 in fiscal year 14 to where it is now at $215,000 in FY 21, which is a number we attained last year, and we're able to preserve that level of funding in the proposal for this year. In addition to that, there used to be about $75,000 that the state sent under the 911 program for additional training. That number is about $100,000. So we've increased, you know, a little bit more aid and a lot more from our own resources so that there's more training opportunities and there's more training delivered each year for our police department and our office. Some of the trainings that we've done in recent years include some specifically focused de-escalation trainings on dealing with specific populations, how to help people who are facing mental health challenges, how to help people on the autism spectrum. And we'll continue to do those, you know, really specific focus type of trainings. We did an implicit bias training last year, and that won't be the last time that we work in that area. That's obviously an area that there's a need for, a lot of education and training throughout our city government, throughout our city and school offices and departments, and certainly in our public safety. But I did want to share that information, as I think it is important that, oh, and I will say, several of, in fact, really, the majority of the different trainings we do have de-escalation components built in, whether they be kind of broadly de-escalation, or, as I said, sometimes targeted to how to interact with, how to recognize and interact with and help de-escalate situations with certain specific populations in our community. So I think that's all really important to share and understand. I also will mention again what I mentioned Monday night. Council President and Councilors Rand and Flowers have each had meetings with me and with members of our Human Rights Committee. We had a very interesting proposal that was brought to us by one of our Human Rights Committee members that I think we recognize has a lot of merit. And in order to try to spend some time this summer in public dialogue about just how to proceed, Mr. Ailes and I have committed to you folks that we're going to do our best to manage the budget, wherever, you know, whatever level it's passed at. We do our best to manage that budget so as to be able to repurpose, refocus somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000, if that's the right number. And our hope is to come back to you by the end of the first quarter, so by fall, with a recommendation. And we're viewing this as a racial justice and equity initiative. The proposal that came to us was to create an Office of Equity and Inclusion, and that may well be the right next step to take in the city. Before we make that, make a final decision in any way, I think it really, I think merits that type of community dialogue and investigation of that opportunity and any others that may present themselves. But the hope is that we'll be able to bring something back early fall that we all collectively believe can make a real difference in helping to ensure that our community is a community that lives up to its promises, you know, as one small city in America for all of our residents. So those are just a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share with you, and happy to answer questions now or later. Certainly, Mr. Ailes and I will be here throughout the meeting. Mr. Ailes, do you have a couple of thoughts you want to share before we turn it back to the President?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. President, I thought it might be helpful to just highlight a few of the major components that are included in the mayor's budget. I know we've been talking a lot over the last few days about the very details that are contained within the mayor's budget. He mentioned it was a 1.16% overall budget increase. That is roughly $1.55 million. It's actually $1.568 million. And within the budget, there are certain areas of cost increases that are effectively absorbed within that overall increase of a 1.16. We had an increase in pension obligation costs of $561,000. The Beverly Public Schools appropriation is proposed to be increased by $1.4 million. The Essex Tech assessment for some of our tuitioning out students over to the Essex Tech is going up by $58,000. Health insurance for active city employees, as well as all of the retirees, is slated to go up $190,000, the portion of the premium that the city pays for. And state assessments are projected to go up roughly $118,000. And in addition to that, all of the municipal departments' spending cumulatively will be increasing by roughly $85,000. And all that is quite a feat to balance in the face of what we're estimating our revenue losses to be is roughly about $4.6 to $4.7 million in lost revenue. Those areas that we're expecting the reduction in revenue primarily is state aid, but it also includes things like meals and room tax, motor vehicle excise tax, some building-related permit reductions in that areas. And so those cumulatively account for roughly $1.6 million shortfall when compared to the FY 20 levels. As a result, we are relying on over a $1 million draw on the city's stabilization reserves. And we feel collectively that this level of spending that's been proposed is very responsible. It will position the city well to address not only the needs for this year, but it can also position us to address any potential additional revenue shortfalls that may materialize in the very near future. And it's responsible, it addresses the known expenditure increases slated for FY 22, when the city must take on significant additional debt, restructure its solid waste contracts, and continue to deliver high level of service to its residents. So overall, we think this is a very responsible budget that the mayor's put forth to you, and we respectfully ask for your support in passing it next week when you take your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Is there anybody here that would like to speak, ask a question, or make a comment on the budget? I'd love to hear from you now to get a list going. Just put your microphone on and give me a show. Well, this is definitely a first. I know, I mean, it's difficult. It's the first public budget hearing that we've ever had to do remotely, not live and in person. You're a city councilor, Council Rand. I'm looking for somebody from the public.
Thank you, President Guonce. I think that needed clarification for the public, maybe.
Right.
Thanks.
I thought that was pretty clear, but thank you.
Also, President Guonce, some members of the public who are here may be here for the first time and be, as the city councilors had our first go-around, maybe somewhat technologically, maybe not challenged, but having just to figure out the necessary steps to speak up and get their name out on the list for you.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list, and it looks like we have some experienced constituents here.
President Guonce, I would like to speak. This is Lorinda Visnick, 39 Middlebury Lane.
All right, you're first, you are first up, Ms. Visnick.
Fantastic. Thank you. I really only unmuted because you were pleading for someone to speak. I would like to thank my fellow elected officials for signing on to the honor of teacher that was presented last night on the school committee, and to the city for being as fiscally responsible as they have been in the past, so that we have the reserves into which we can dip in order to maintain a level service-funded budget. We need not look very far to see other communities that have already laid off a huge number of teachers and gutted various programs, and we're not doing that here in Beverly. And so I really just want to take this opportunity to thank every single person who has been involved in that fiscal responsibility. And, you know, I often stand at your podium and ask for more money, and today, I quote unquote "stand" at your podium, and I just want to give those words of thanks.
Well, thank you. And I know you're speaking as a citizen, but I want to thank you and your colleagues. I know School Committee President Rachel A. Bell is here for the work you did with your budget. I mean, that's so important to be able to present a budget to the mayor that he can plug in the city money and figure it out and make it work. It's a lot of work, and this has definitely been the toughest budget that I've experienced in all my years here. Do any councilors wish to make a comment or say anything? I know that we'll have our chance next week when we take our committee votes on Monday the 22nd, and then we'll have the budget before us for final passage on the 24th. But I welcome any comments this evening. Council Rand, did you want to say anything else, or can I go right to Council Housman? Let's go to Council Housman.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I've heard some, from some constituents, and there's been questions about the raise of Prop 2.5 taxes in the budget, but I just wonder if Mr. Ailes could sort of speak to the impact on the budget of, overall, of what it means to have or not have the increase in that revenue, and then, correspondingly, the impact on any individual citizen if we do or do not have raised the full levy under a 2.5% increase in the real estate taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Ailes, you touched on that before in an earlier meeting, but I think it's something that is well worth repeating.
Yeah, I think it's important every year to let our constituents know that this is something that we look at every year and weigh.
Of course.
Yeah, it's a very fair question, and I think, as you mentioned the other evening, Council Housman, you know, it's a necessary conversation that we have every year, you know, and certainly as a taxpayer in this community, it's one that I ask myself every time we sit around a table and try to build a budget, and I'm sure that you all ask yourselves as well. The difficulty with municipal spending and municipal budgets are that you tend to have cost increases that go up year after year, whether that's the cost of asphalt, whether it's the cost of supplies for your offices, toner for your, you know, printers, office space that you may rent, or costs of employees, frankly. And in municipal government, we are a service-oriented organization that has significant level of costs tied up in employees and payroll. And those costs do go up. There are collectively bargained obligations that the city must, to its fullest extent, adhere to. And so, in an effort to do that, we've built a budget that we feel is responsible growth, and it does rely on a potential 2.5% property tax increase. The value of that potential 2.5% increase, which, by the way, since the law was enacted roughly, Mayor, you can correct me on this, I think it was 30 years ago, maybe more.
Almost 40.
So in that period of time, the City of Beverly has always gone up to the 2.5% that's allowed by law every single year. So this is really no different than a typical year in that regard for taxpayers. That 2.5% levy increase, when it gets into the budget, equates to $2.7 million in additional funding for the city to pay for those increased costs every year. Now, if the city were to choose to not go to the 2.5% and were to go to, say, 2.25% increase, that small 1/4% reduction in increase would equate to a roughly $250,000 to $270,000 loss in revenue, okay? So we would either need to make additional cuts to the service levels or the spending, or we would need to dip into additional reserves or other areas of revenue that, frankly, in this environment, don't exist. So that amount of $270,000 for the average taxpayer is going to mean that instead of their property tax going up $174 next year, this is on average, $174, it would go up $156. So that's basically about $1.50 a month, less of an increase that the average taxpayer would receive, and the value to the city is additional cuts for about $1.25 million to $270,000, which would have significant impact in this type of a budget season where we've really tightened our belt in many, many areas to try to absorb that $4.6 million shortfall that we're trying to claw out of. So hopefully, that helps the viewers at home and the taxpayers within the community to better understand what's at stake here in the trade-offs and the cost and benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you. Mayor Kayale?
If I could just to follow on Mr. Ailes, Mr. Ailes articulated that very well. He did reference how, given that, given that property taxes go up to the levy limit annually of necessity to meet the, you know, the needs that we have collectively, that we prioritize that other communities values to deliver on these services, when he said that it's, this is no difference from a typical, no different from a typical year, within a typical year in terms of what we raise for revenues, we all recognize it's anything but a typical year on the other side of things in terms of the pressures people are feeling and the many people who experienced, you know, interruptions in their income and their ability to work and make a living. So we recognize that that's not at all the norm. And I just, I just want to make sure I say that, you know, we, Mr. Ailes talked about certain specific line items that are always a challenge, and, you know, one thing that he didn't reference that we know we have to increase significantly this year is the, our contribution to the pension line. And that's something that, you know, is just an example of a line that grows significantly. I think Mr. Ailes can help me on that, but I think it's by law, by state federal requirement, we've got to increase that by roughly 4.5% a year. We're bound under law to move towards a full funding of our pension system. Just an example of the type of cost that we, is really a nondiscretionary. And the collectively bargained obligations that remain going through this coming fiscal year, those also are really nondiscretionary in that they were negotiated and committed to about a year ago for this coming year. So these are the kind of things that create pressures in the budget that require, and typically have required, not just Beverly, but communities all throughout Massachusetts, to increase taxes each year to the levy limit. I know that there are a couple of people who had questions for me during this process and saying, you know, what are you doing raising taxes? And, you know, it's, not everybody will be satisfied with this answer, but some people, when they realize that we weren't doing anything beyond the levy limit increase that is is, that occurs each year, they understood a little better why we were doing what we were doing. In order for any community in Massachusetts to raise taxes beyond 2.5% of its levy limit from one year to the next, that has to go on the ballot, and the people have to vote to do it or not do it. I just want to make sure that nobody, you know, that anybody that might be unclear on that has the opportunity to understand that one better, that, you know, what we're proposing and what we're asking you to vote on is, you know, raising taxes within the levy limit, up to the levy limit, which, you know, unfortunately has been a staple of making municipal government work in Massachusetts and delivering the level of services that people really count on and not just are used to, but really need. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you.
Thank you. That's a great point, because there are a lot of people that reached out to many of us on the city council about raising taxes that didn't understand that 2.5% that that's what we do every year to fund necessary services. Council Feldman, please.
Yes, thank you. I have brought this up before in terms of going to 2.5, and I think in looking over the numbers and hearing in the meetings prior to this meeting, hearing about that often in a recession, years two and three are worse, and one of the, one of the factors that really convinced me that the full 2.5 would be needed was that the compounding effect of if we don't take the 2.5 this year, then it's really, it will carry into the next two, years two and three, when we actually could need to build off of that more. So that was one of the factors, that along with the fact that in looking at other communities, the amount of times that override has been passed in other communities and the, and Beverly not, you know, not really doing that, really kind of made me realize that it was the more responsible thing to do for the long term to actually go to 2.5 instead of decreasing it this year. So I just wanted to follow up on that, because I asked a lot of questions on this prior to this meeting.
That's great, thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, everybody, for the input. I will close our public hearing. For that matter, back to the Committee on Finance and Property, the Committee on Finance and Property, and the Committee of the Whole will meet on Monday, June 22 at 7:00 p.m. So let's go on to our agenda. We have communications from his honor, the mayor. Ms. Kent?
Order number 137. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has secured an electric school bus for the upcoming 2021 school year by a bid award on Highland Electric Transportation. The electric school bus will be maintained at the Beverly Public School Bus Depot, which is adjacent to the Beverly Middle School at 502 Cabot Street. The charging station for the school bus will be installed inside the bus depot and requires an easement from National Grid. Please see attached easement documentation to allow for the electric bus charging station. National Grid needs to install a pole with wires, cables, and necessary anchors, guys, and apparatuses, as well as overhead and underground electrical systems at this location. Additionally, the Beverly School Committee will consider this request on Wednesday, June 17 at the school committee meeting. Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before the easement can be granted. I therefore request the city council approve this easement by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on Thursday, June 18. Thank you. Sincerely, your honor, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And Mayor Cahill, do you want to say a couple things about this? Sounds good.
Sure. I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to our grant director, Catherine Barrett, and our Commissioner of Public Services, Mike Collins. They can explain it much more articulately than me at this point, and you've heard from me a bunch already.
Okay. Ladies before gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll give a summary of the project, just so everyone gets some familiarity with it, and then our Commissioner of Public Services can chime in if you have any questions that require engineering expertise. I'd like to brief you all on the electric school bus project. We've been working on this for, it'll be a year next month, and we're very excited that the city is going to be acquiring its first electric school bus. We put out a bid last July, and the winning bidder was Highland Electric Transportation, which is based in Hamilton, Mass. We're going to be leasing the bus for five years for $24,000 a year, which is the same price that we pay for a diesel combustion school bus. The bus is on schedule to arrive next month despite a one-month hiatus in production because of the COVID-19 virus, so we're very pleased about that. There'll be a DC charging station that needs to be installed at the Beverly Middle School Bus Depot, and National Grid, as the clerk mentioned, needs to install a pole and above and below ground electrical work at that location so that the electric school bus can be charged each evening. An easement is required, and the contract with National Grid for this easement is $1. I can't take any credit for negotiating that, but someone did a good job, so it's only a $1 cost. We've been liaising with Dana Crookshank, who is our Director of Transportation for the schools, to retire the old school bus and to install the charging station. And Mike Collins, our Commissioner of Public Services, can provide expert information regarding engineering aspects of the project. And the school committee approved the easement last night unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0, so we appreciated that. And I just wanted to apologize for this coming so quickly to the council. Because of the coronavirus, things have been taking a little bit longer. National Grid is also working remotely, as we are at City Hall, so things have been taking a little bit longer, but everything's been getting accomplished and remaining on schedule, so we're pleased about that.
Great, thank you, Ms. Barrett. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mr. President, good evening.
Good evening.
For us, it's a pretty routine process. Anytime National Grid wants to install conduit or cable on our property, usually in the street, you know, they come to you for a grant of location, but on, on a lot like the high school, the middle school, and we construct any building like this, even the new police station, they come to us looking for an easement to locate their primary cables and their transformer on our property. So this is pretty routine work. The work is pretty simple. At this particular lot, they're able to stay within the grass and not disturb any of the existing pavement, so it's not going to make any, have any real significant impacts to the middle school property itself and the, and all the hard work that we just did there. So it's pretty seamless for us.
Thank you. And this will be done before school reconvenes in September, hopefully?
Yeah, it's not in the parking lot even, so it's actually pretty, pretty low impact, even if it did happen during school, but yes, it'll be completed before school. They're, under a time crunch, the bus arrives next month, or in August, I guess, and so we want to have the bus operational and the charging station operational before school starts. The conduit installation is fairly straightforward, fairly easy. Sometimes, depending on how National Grid's workload is, because this is obviously not the only project they have, that, the actual connection to the primary is out on the street can be the thing that takes the most time, just because availability accrues.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Collins or Ms. Barrett? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Feldman?
Hello?
Hausmann, yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guancey?
And yes, thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from his honor, the mayor.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guancey?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Order number 139. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Ms. Stephanie Tallow, Rehab Street Extension, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Council of Aging. Her term is to be effective from June 30, 2020 until June 30, 2023. Sincerely, your honor, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. Mayor Cahill?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. I did want to say before we, before we left the easement issue, I want to say, Mrs. Tallow, I hope you folks, I hope you take positive action there. She'll be fantastic on Councilman Aging. But I also want to say, I want to thank Commissioner Collins, because it was a bit understated there, but the work that he does and that the engineering department do in our relationship with National Grid, you know, National Grid is, as you know, they're a large, complex company, and we don't always get exactly what we need when we need it, but we do, we do really well as a community in our interactions with Grid, and they perform a lot of great services in our community, and I'd say that Commissioner Collins is the biggest reason why. I want to say that aloud. I also want to thank Ms. Barrett, because the work that she does as our grant director across the board is great. The work she did in bringing this EV school bus to us is, it's got me very excited, I tell you. We really, we want to transition that whole fleet. I don't know how many years it'll take. If you can't get to the finish line, they'll get into the start line. And to have our first EV school bus arriving this summer is just a great win. I also want to say, since Ms. Barrett is sitting there with a wonderful background, I see a high school diploma over her, over her left shoulder, and I want to congratulate her on her daughter Paris's graduation from Beverly High recently. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 138. Petition from Access Engineering Group to install PPC communication conduit east side of Sam Fonzel Drive to private property at 75 Sam Fonzel Drive.
I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for that on Monday, June 29 at 6:15 p.m.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guancey?
Yes, thank you. Motion's and orders.
Order 121. Be obtained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. Ordered in year 2020, an ordinance amending an ordinance entitled Chapter 270, Section 46, 30-minute parking. Adoption of this amendment can be made by adding the highlighted line in section 270-46 as indicated below. Go Hill Lane, north from Cox Court to Cabot Street from 8 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and this is the final passage, and it was in the newspaper.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. Roll call, vote, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guancey?
Yes.
Order number 128. Be obtained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. Ordered in the year 2020, proposed order amending Beverly ordinance, Section 113-2, possession or consumption of alcohol on public ways and public places or on private property by adding paragraph C as set forth below. Notwithstanding paragraph A, Beverly residents, restaurants may be allowed to operate and serve alcohol on city sidewalks, in parklifts, parking spaces, public ways, or other public space, but upon, only upon approval by the Health Department, Municipal Inspection Departments, Planning Department, Public Safety, in accordance with standards established by the Planning Department. As such, users are subject to review and approval by the Licensing Board, including conditions imposed by such Board. This paragraph, paragraph C shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of 11:59 p.m., December 31, 2020. That's within the paper too, and this is the final reading.
Right. Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. Roll call, vote, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Guancey?
Yes.
Order number 129. Be obtained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. In the year 2020, ordered amending Beverly ordinance, Section 192-61, sandwich board signs by adding paragraph E as set forth below. Notwithstanding paragraphs A through D, sandwich board signs may be displayed without a permit issued by the city council, but only upon approval by the municipal inspections and planning departments in accordance with standards established by the planning department. This paragraph E shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of 11:59 p.m., December 31, 2020. And it was the final passage, and it was in the newspaper.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes, that's great. That's all we have on our agenda this evening. Thanks to everybody for being here. Special thanks to school committee members, President Rachel Abel, and Lorinda Visnick for joining us. Thank you to the mayor, of course, and Brian Ailes, Ms. Barrett, Miss Collins, Chief LaLashaw was here also. Quick shout out to fifth grader, fifth middle school student, Jewel Stevenson. I saw on Facebook that she was making masks at her house, and I put in a request for one, and she dropped off a dozen, I think, and many of them had the Red Sox logo on them. Where's my camera, see? So that made me happy, thinking about baseball. So it's amazing what people are doing, and so many of our residents have gone out of their way to make masks for people that need them. So Monday, we have, it's not a full city council meeting, it is a meeting of the Committee on Finance and Property. Other councils will join us, so we'll call to order the Committee of the Whole, and that is on Monday, the 22nd, at 7 p.m., and then we'll meet again on Wednesday night, the 24th, at 7, to hopefully pass Mayor Cahill's FY21 budget. That said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
And could we have a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Bye, good night.
Bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.